Before we get started, Commissioner Payton is joining us by phone. I ask for someone to make a motion allowing Commissioner Payton to participate by phone.
So moved.
Motion made, in discussion. All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Payton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alan.
Now, we have two options.
Because we cannot start our meeting until nine o'clock, you may take a break. You may go into closed session, whatever your desire is at this moment.
We got time for those?
Yeah.
And as to discuss matters relating to the location of expansion of business in Wayne County
Father, we know that as our Creator, that you want us to be more like you and not like ourselves. We ask, Father, that you might continue to give us the wisdom that we need. Yes, Father, we are thankful for all of our emergency services people and EMS, firemen, policemen, utility, firemen, sheriffs, policemen, our military. Yes, we are thankful for these people that are protecting our properties, our borders, and our health. But Father, today I take this time to ask you to intervene and to look at our nation as a whole. I pray for our nation today, that, Father, as we deal with the conflicts that are before us, not only here on this county, but on the state and federal level, that, Father, you might instill with us, in us, the responsibility of your Ten Commandments that you gave to Moses so many years ago, that are good for society, rules to live by, that we might revisit those. Father, we know that you are watching over this country. We see your hand in our country every day. Being your, being a Creator of this universe, we ask that you would take these prayers. And it's still in each of us, the wisdom we need to make our daily life decisions. These things I ask in your name, amen.
Stand and face the flag, please.
Paying allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I have a motion for approval of amendments of June 4, 2019?
So move.
Motion made, all in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Mr. Pay, yes. Discussion just agenda, Mr. Honeycutt.
As board's aware, we had some walk-on budget amendments that we did in the agenda briefing, and we would like to add those to our agenda under consent.
Okay, any commissioner have anything to add? Motion to approve agenda.
So move.
Motion made, any discussion? All in favor, please signify, raise your right hand.
Yes.
Mr. Pay, yes. Special presentations, Mr. Honeycutt.
We have our annual employee pins that we would like to hand out today for those that have served a long, very productive time here in Wayne County. So we'll start off with the one year.
Yes, sir. First, Joseph Gray with the planning department.
I didn't know who he was either.
Mary, has anybody ever called you Jubby?
It's a good name, though.
And as you see Barry's waiting up here, we ask that each of you do that so we can take your picture after. Esmeralda Heron with DSS Income Maintenance. Brianna Mills, DSS Income Maintenance. Lakeisha Peton with the jail. Maria Rush, DSS Child Support. Richard Edwards with the jail. Wilma Hampton, DSS Regular Services. Perlisha Jones, DSS Administration. Shanice Ruffin, DSS Regular Services. Cynthia Sawyer, DSS Regular Services. And Angelica Sellers, Health Administration. That's it for our one year, sir. Next will be our five-year pins. And we'll begin with Donald Foster with Facilities. Ryan Narin with the jail. Ronald Peel with the Sheriff's Office.
Well, it's good everybody's working.
Great comment. CJ Weaver with the Sheriff's Office. Alrighty then, ten-year pins. All right, Judy Carmichael, DSS Income Maintenance. Christopher Barnes, Emergency Services. Yay! And we'll move on to the fifteen-year pins. I thank y'all for being here. Matthew Miller with the Sheriff's Office. Marcia Renee Smith, DSS Income Maintenance. Melanie Elliott Harper with Health Administration. Ricky Wood, Solid Waste. Finally, we have the twenty-year pins. Beginning with Robert Chun with the Sheriff's Office. And Connie Smith, Health Administration. Let's give Connie a hand, that's twenty years. Joel's gonna get your picture.
Mr. Chairman, before they leave, let that young lady, she's kind of short, let her come up here and take a picture of her mom. Just get right here in front and take a picture.
It's gotta be.
That's great.
All right, thank y'all very much.
And we also have a very special recognition today. As everybody's aware, that our HR Director, Geraldine Lee. This is her last official county commissioner meeting. And we appreciate the work that Geraldine's done. She's been our HR Director since October 2014. We appreciate where she's taken us. And Geraldine, if you'll come up here, I'd like to read this on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. This is presented to Geraldine Lee, Human Resources Director, Wayne County, October 2014 through June 2019. In special tribute for her dedication, public service as a Human Resources Director, Wayne County, Wayne County Board of Commissioners expresses a sincere appreciation for her unselfishness and professional service to the Wayne County staff and its citizens. Your commitment to the betterment of our employees has made Wayne County a better county and a better place to work and live. Presented this the 18th day of June 2019, Derek Gurley, Chairman, Bill Payne, Vice Chairman, Commissioners Wayne Acock, John Bell, Ed Cromarty, Judge Audrey, and Ray Mayo. Congratulations.
I'll just say it's been a real pleasure and an honor to serve this county and the citizens of Wayne County. When I took this job, I was excited to be back in the field of human resources until about the end of the first week. And I wasn't quite sure what I got myself into, but I've learned a lot about county government, coming from private industry of 37 years. And it's, it's just, it's been an honor to get to know the people, the employees, and I was, it occurred to me when we had our employee picnic, and as people were coming in, I could call just about everybody by name. And that's a good thing. That's, that's a very good thing. Employees have felt comfortable coming to me, and I felt comfortable coming to them. And I appreciate all of your support, each and every one of you. Thank you very much.
I do have another special introduction. Zaire Webb, who is, is there, come on up. Zaire is our summer intern this summer with the City of Goldsboro program. And Zaire started, this is all of day two, so we're, so he ain't quit yet, so we're very excited for him, that we haven't run him off yet. But we appreciate your working with us, and y'all do.
Zaire's 10th grade, Wayne Early Middle College High.
Wind chest.
Yeah, so he has his second day, so he's gotten thrown in the Commissioner meeting so far, but he's gonna be our intern for about six weeks in Public Affairs, so if you see him around, he's no stranger, he's with us, so anything you want to say?
I'm looking forward to working here for those six weeks. I feel like it'll be a good learning experience. And so far, I've enjoyed it. I know I've only been here for two days, and judging by her last statement, hopefully the week doesn't make me sad. But I doubt it will. I've really enjoyed working here so far, and I think I will for the rest of the time. I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
And I would like that, Minette Rod, if you would come up, we have some special recognitions you would like to do as well.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
We would like to present, over the last January, we've had several saves in the county, the paramedics get the calls, go out, some cardiac arrests, overdoses here in the county. And they've, they've put out what they've learned in training into the field to save the lives of some of our citizens here in the county. So I would just like to present, I've got four coins here I'd like to present. So the first one is Janet Daughtry. Can we let them go up front so we can get a picture? The second one, DeShawn Rose.
My church member.
And Janet Daughtry. They put in a lot of training to be able to serve the citizens here in the county, to keep up their certifications, all the way from the EMT level, all the way up through the paramedic. If it weren't for each levels, they could not do their jobs. So it takes a team effort for everybody to do what they do on a day-in, a day-out basis. So, thank y'all.
Before you leave, if you two will stand on each side of them, Joel's gonna take a picture from the cameras, and he'd like both of you up there with. Can we get Alex Westbrook up here outside? You can take his train. Where'd you go?
Yeah, whoever you like.
So if you'll just kind of look up at those cameras up there by the clock and smile, and we'll count to one, two, three, and Joel will get it. There we go, thank you.
And, thank you very much, guys, appreciate it. Next, we have a presentation by the Wayne County 4H Robotics Club, and Kevin or?
So, thank you again for this opportunity to, for us to share the Wayne County 4H Robotics Club. Y'all have been involved with this for years now, and we're so excited that Ms. Ann Finch is with us today. She's one of the founding fathers of this, and she's kept this going. And these kids are outstanding kids. And Mr. Ray, I know you have a passion for this, and we do appreciate everything you've done. But I do want to introduce to y'all, y'all know Summer Young, she's been with us for a long time, and we're excited. She is, we just got such a great staff. Jessica Hogan is actually, I want you to know, she's our 4H agent, she's actually doing camp this morning. So, you know, we have our camp, so she could not be here, but Summer is getting ready to leave here and go to camp. So, anyway, thank y'all so much for what y'all have done, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you again for allowing us to be here and to tell you about our amazing 2018 to 2019 robotic season. This year, we had 33 high school students from nine schools in Wayne County, with the addition of homeschoolers. Team 3737 has had an amazing year with our robot, but we have done more than just compete. We have helped our community by spreading STEM, promoting first, and just being a helping
We started our off-season last summer teaching summer camps. We do robots, design detectives, and many EV3 robots, which all help us teach programming, logic, and design skills.
We taught the robotics merit badges boy scouts coming from Virginia and Tennessee. We also taught monthly STEM activities at the Alphabet Soup Club, this is a homework club for students at soup kitchen families, and monthly STEM activities at the Boys and Girls Club.
Other community activities include demoing robots at the 4H picnic, Meadow Lane High School, Christian Jamboree, Wayne Early Middle High School Club Assembly, homeschool conference, and the Carolina Gaming Summit. We also manned booths at the Wayne County 8th Grade Science Fair and 9th Grade Career Fair. Over 1,500 students attended both days.
Let's not forget our nine days at the Wayne Regional Agricultural Fair. Demoing dawn, helping small children navigate the interactive booth and baking cookies. We also had two hot days on Seymour Air Force Base during Wings Over Wayne.
Team 3737 demoed at local businesses and are very grateful for the support we received.
A highlight of our year was running an FLL qualifying tournament for 28 teams at Wayne Country Day School. We made tables, sold concessions, judged, and refereed. It was exhausting and a lot of fun.
We are also involved with First Lego League Junior for grades K through 4 at Carver and Meadow Lane Elementary Schools, as well as many 4H after-school teams.
Other community services include making and filling blessing boxes, cleaning supplies for hurricane relief, hygiene packs for the soup kitchen, and placing flags on soldiers' graves during Memorial Day. Training is important. We brought in experts, held trainings with other teams, and hosted our own in various
More than training, more training on an off-season competition in Charlotte last fall, we took our 2018 Robot Dawn and let lots of people try out new positions.
We included team builders for our meetings as a fun way to learn and work together and build friendships. Our 4H leaders provide an annual team-building workshop.
In February, we had the opportunity to speak to our
In February, we had the opportunity to speak to our state representatives at First Legislative Showcase Day.
The 2019 game was drilled in January. Deep space required us to cover rocket, rocket ship and cargo openings with round hatch panels. Round balls were used as, were used as cargoes and put into the containers. The in-game bonus was to climb on different levels to, of the habitat for extra points.
Design, CAD, safety, and precision are some of the areas we look at. Our program is using LabVIEW programming language. Bag Day came, and Strike Raptor was nearly complete.
We chose to build an elevator robot. We wanted to place hatches, pick up balls, and climb. The chassis is an eight-wheel custom-built drive base. The elevator is a complex and precision-engineered assembly design to provide smooth extension up to seven feet. We connected our modular hatch and cargo intake to this. In order to climb for the bonus points, we added a lift leg. This is a custom-designed rack and pinion designed to lift the rear of the robot up to either the second or third platform heights. Autonomous programming controlled the operation to keep the robot level and make the climbs smooth. We also programmed the six heights of the elevator to deposit hatches and cargo.
Our first competition was at the beginning of March. We took 30 students to Holly Springs High School. We placed hatches on the cargo ship and on the rocket. We also climbed to the second habitat level.
Our team finished 10th out of 35 teams. We were chosen to be part of the Fourth Alliance and played for the semifinals. We received Inspector's Award for Clean and Best Wired Easy-to-Expect Robot. We also received the Quality Award.
At the end of March, we took 25 students to UNC Pembroke. Again, we placed hatches on all three levels of the rocket and cargo ship. Climbing to the second hab was a normal occurrence.
We ranked six out of 36 teams and ended as the fifth alliance captains and played as a semifinal. We were through to receive the Chairman's Award, this one right here, which is the highest award that teams can earn. This allowed us to compete with three of the teams for this award at the state level.
We qualified for the state championships and took 29 students to Campbell University. Our hatch placement was fast and accurate, our climb was also great.
We were chosen by the Fourth Alliance and played through the semifinals. We received the Industrial Design Award and found out that we qualified for the World
We were one of 14 North Carolina teams to advance to the World's Championship in Houston, Texas. There were over 400 FRC teams in 17 countries represented. We are now able to climb to the top hab platform. This is a video of one of our matches from Houston. Our robot starts in the middle of the red side and plays mostly in the top left corner. Enjoy. All right, I'm going to carry on and see if we can carry it.
We ended up 27th out of 67 on our field and were chosen by the Fourth Alliance and were finalists on our field. They gave us a trophy and medallions for everyone. We were also amazingly awarded the Entrepreneurship Award. One of three given out for 400 teams, it was an amazing experience for our 21 students who were able to make the trip.
As you can see, the Rotaraptors build robots, but they do so much more. We help our community and inspire other kids to get into STEM and be the leaders for tomorrow.
Team 3737 would like to thank the community for all the support that we have had from them from now and in the future. This is a team effort, and we appreciate each of you.
Thank you. If you guys have any questions. Y'all had that damn pad. Great job, great job.
Mr. Mayo.
Now, time for comment.
Yes.
This, this is one of the things that I'm proud of for the Raptors, where our company has been a sponsor for many years. This is one of the programs that I see, and of course, I'm partial because I'm in the manufacturing sector. But what you do, I see every part of STEM in your projects that you do. We have the science, we have the technology, we have the engineering, and we have the math. But you know what most of all is? You have developed a teamwork that is very truly needed to be successful out in your workplace and in your careers. So I just want to say that I and our company are so proud to be a part of what you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We would love a photo, please.
Sure.
And once they're done, if you guys will look up at those cameras up there, Joel will take one as well with the camera from the control room.
The glare. The sun shining.
So I do want to make one more comment. This is just not, they're a 4H group, but the people they're going up against aren't 4H clubs. They're going up against these big schools in Raleigh and Dallas, you name it, all over the place. They're going up against schools like the School of Math and Science that have a lot of resources and funds, and this is, this is a 4H group right here in Wayne County that's able to make these teams.
Yep. Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please send us a copy of that video, though, that we were not able to see.
Yes, I'll add it to the next Raptor report.
Great, thank you.
It is worth seeing.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you so much.
Next, we'd like that, there's a representative from Boys and Girls Club here to introduce our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Youth Voice Summit candidate. So, there you go. Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, I have a couple members with me that's with the Boys and Girls Club, Aleah Carroll and Kavars Wellington. Over the past four or five years, we've been, we've been attending the youth summit. This year, I believe it's in Greensboro again. And so, got two candidates this year that have some future interests on, you know, how to run, to be a county commissioner. So, we just taking this opportunity to come meet y'all, and they might have a couple questions for y'all, and wanted to take a picture and hope to see y'all soon in August. So, looking forward to this opportunity.
Well, thank you.
What impact do you think being a commissioner has on the community?
Didn't quite hear it. I hope one of the impacts that we might have is to interest and inspire, inspire young people like yourself to be community advocates. And I'm not talking about waiting until you get on a board like this. You can be community activist by simply having an impact on a person in your own neighborhood, on your own street next to you. There's nothing like setting a good example. And so, any impact that any of us can make is, how's it going to affect the person that's closest to you?
And it gives you an opportunity for a young person to come and really stun you with a question like that. But seriously, commissioners do have a big impact in regards to the community. And I think all, all the members of this board just feel like that we've made a very positive impact.
And our, the impact is, the seven of us, we basically, the major decisions has to be made in the county. It lies on our shoulders. It's a ve, very big responsibility and very humbling sometimes. But, but they said, you know, y'all are the future of this country, and we certainly appreciate y'all being involved, because someday you could very well be sitting in one of these seats right here, or, or in a higher position somewhere else. But thank you for participating.
And I'm sorry, I'm Ray Trill Caldwell, the Team Youth Director at the Boys and Girls Club.
We figured that.
There's one good thing about being a county commissioner. We are the only form of government where you have direct contact, contact with on a daily basis. All the other elected officials are away someplace else, and you only read about them or maybe see them once in a while, but you have daily contact with us.
Did y'all always know this is what y'all wanted to do?
Sorry, what was your question?
Did y'all always know this, this is what y'all wanted to do? Am I?
No. Never had a, never, never had a clue. I was always interested in the local, what's going on in our county. I always tried to keep up with the county commissioner and what was going on in our county. But most of the time, most of the time when you're in your twenties or thirties, you're concerned about these things, but your career and your family take precedence. And so, it's not something that you, a lot of people don't look at really seriously because you're trying to make a living every day. But if you get older, you see that it's time to give back. A lot of people feel, that's the way I felt. I felt like that this county and this state, this country, had blessed me and my family to the point that it was time to give back and help someone else. And so, that's, I think that's the calling, is to be willing to step up and to give back to your community. And, and one of the main things is, you know, you can look at this, and most of us are what you call over the hill. But if you, if you led a successful life, and it, and the people in the county have the respect for you to ask you to run for this position, because all of us, at some point, we had to be pushed a little bit. You, you're really not a decision you make on your own. It's, it's the way you've led your life, and if you can gain respect of the people in the county, they have a tendency to kindly push you on a little bit. And, and, and so, that's, that's how most of us ended up here, was, was having the, you've got to have the support of the citizens to be in this position. I came home for four years, and 19 years later, I'm still here. He's the old rat in the barn.
Well, we like, we appreciate it. Kavars and Aleah, they're part of our junior staff at the Boys and Girls Club, pretty much as tied into our Keystone Club as well. They go out in the community, they look for community events to chip in and help out with. And so, this is just a stepping stone for them to, you know, get their interests and, you know, see if this is something they want to do in the future or whatever. So, we thank y'all for inviting us and putting us on the agenda today. Hopefully, they could get a picture with y'all, and, you know, we can put it on our website, so we can brag a little bit about it.
A minute. What, what's your grade? What's your classification?
I'm a rising senior, and I go to Charles B. Eagle.
A rising senior?
Yes, sir.
I'm a rising senior as well.
You're a rising senior also. I, I couldn't really hear your question when you asked, I'm sorry, I just, that's my hearing, it's not your, it's not your speaking. When I saw you all and come to this kind of meeting, it takes me back to, well, your parents probably won't even born, but 1964, 65, I appeared before County Commissioner Meeting in Fayetteville, and it had to do with a drainage situation, a water drainage situation in southeast Fayetteville. And so, I, I never thought about, I'll be on this side of the desk. It was that I was prepared to do on that side of the desk. But I was always interested in what was happening in our neighborhood, and we had call-in talk shows in Fayetteville back at that time. And I routinely called in to complain about something. But I was complaining progressively, as I felt. But, but this is what I encourage you to do, is to come before this kind of a board. When you're throughout the community, you see things that you know is not right, come and take that full minutes that we have every session to, I, I use the word complain, but you don't have to complain, just make your point of view now, because you are in a excellent position to be heard. I encourage you to do that. And but y'all being involved already at, at a young age, you're already gaining respect of others. You, you don't realize it now, but, you know, you, you keep doing what you're doing, being involved, and someday you realize that, you know, this started a long time ago.
I'd like to thank y'all again.
If you hold tight, though, and look up at the cameras and the gray system. Okay, and you're good? Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Are you familiar with the Mount Olive Boys, Girls Club?
Oh, yes. Ms. Cynthia Jones, she's the club director down there. So we've worked together, no big difference, right? Sure did. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to come down and see you, I'm proud of you and my work on.
Yes, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we do have Matthew Willett here, who's Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity of Goldsboro, Wayne. And Matthew is going to give us an update on activities with Habitat.
Good morning. Hope y'all are doing well. Most y'all know me, I'm a widow, executive director for Habitat, Goldsboro, Wayne. Worked with most y'all in different capacities in the past, but wanted to come today for two things. One, just give a brief update on how things are going with Habitat. I've not had the opportunity to do that, I don't think, since I've been in the position. But also to say thank you for the, for the recent donation of the two properties on Georgia Avenue here in, here in Goldsboro. I talked to the city council for a moment last night and thanked them as well for agreeing to convey those properties, so we're looking forward to, to getting that done. Habitat Goldsboro, Wayne, we've been around since 2001, and of course, you know, we were founded by Bill and Jan Edgerton. Since then, we have built 80 houses, the 80th house down in Mount Olive, on Chestnut Street there, that will be dedicated probably within the next month or so, so we'll be assured to invite y'all to come to that. Those home dedications are great opportunities to come and really see what Habitat's all about, see the impact that we're having on families' lives, see the impact of what having that affordable house, that affordable home means to, means to them. Overall, this 80 new homes that we've built, but we also have recycled a few homes, we have done, we, we've started a home repair program. We also have partners overseas where we send a portion of our revenue, help support projects in Haiti and elsewhere internationally through Habitat for Humanity International. So through that, we have served, the folks of Wayne County have served a total of 148 families since 2001, ensuring that they have permanent affordable homes to live in, whether here in Wayne County or abroad. Speaking to a little bit of, of the, the donations and the way we work with the county, of course, we don't come to y'all asking for an appropriation or anything every year, but we do occasionally ask for properties. There's properties that have been foreclosed upon that we want to see back with single-family homes rebuilt on them. So over the years since 2001, we've received a total of 11 properties from, from the county and the various municipalities, Goldsboro and Mount Olive. Of those six, I'm sorry, of those eight- Of those six, I'm sorry, of those eight have been built on, have single-family homes on. Three of them we haven't built on yet, the two that we just got, and one, another one here in Goldsboro that we're waiting on. But we look forward to building on those. Those eight families that are now in their homes, one is a teacher at the community college now. One is a grandmother raised, who raised her kids. Now she's raising her grandkids in her house. Another one, the homeowner has paid it off and is now owns her home free and clear, which is always a good feeling for a homeowner. Other ones, families of five, families of two, families of three, places where they can raise their children securely and safely. That's the impact that you have when you donate those properties to Habitat for Humanity and allow us the opportunity to work with families to build those homes with them. Other families have seen their kids going to college, opportunities that they say would not have been possible had it not been for working with Habitat for Humanity. And of course, that would have been impossible for us to work with them had the county, had the city not provided the opportunity for us to have those properties to build on. In terms of dollars and cents, that's always important to mention. Not only are you investing in Habitat, not only are you investing in families in our community, but it comes back to the county as well. In 2018, Habitat for Humanity homeowners are responsible for almost $82,000 in property taxes. Since 2002, Habitat homeowners have been responsible for nearly $670,000 in property taxes paid to the county and the municipality. So as you can see, not only, when you donate that lot, that sitting on the books is a vacant lot for maybe $4,000. When that's donated to Habitat for Humanity, we build a house and their family moves in there. They're contributing to the community not just by improving their neighborhood, not just by being an active member of their neighborhood, not just by being an active member of their community, but also through the county coffers, through the municipality coffers, and allowing the investments to continue into our community. So the big thing is, I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, for the donations, for working with Habitat, for understanding the importance of affordable housing. That is something that we do believe in. We are working strongly toward. We hope to be a more active voice, just highlighting the need for affordable housing in our community as we go forward. Not only affordable homeownership, but also affordable rental opportunities, access to equitable credit, all these sorts of things that allow families the opportunity to become homeowners. One last thing I'll mention, just because I can't get in front of anybody and not mention this, just as a reminder, that when Habitat for Humanity works with families, we don't give our houses away. We sell those houses at affordable mortgages. Those families are helping to build those houses. And so they're partnering with us. Not only they're buying their houses, but they're partnering with us to be part of the process, to really have that investment in the place that they're gonna go home for the next 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years. The place that maybe someday their grandchildren or their grandchildren could inherit and call home. And again, we appreciate the partnership with the county. We enjoy working with y'all. We invite y'all to come out to a job site sometime, come out and build with us. We'd love to have you out there swinging a hammer beside our guys. If you haven't swung a hammer, I think probably most of y'all have swung hammers before. But if you haven't, then our site supervisors make sure everything goes smoothly and make sure everybody knows which nail to put where. But we would love to have y'all come out sometime with that and we'll pass some opportunities along through staff. But again, thank you. And if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. All right.
What is the average cost of said three-bedroom house that you all would build? I know the one on Chestnut Street. What size is it, two or three bedroom?
The one on Chestnut is a four-bedroom.
Four-bedroom?
Yes, sir.
It's amazing. And the average size of the rooms are 10 by 10s or what?
Thereabouts, yes, sir. The average house is about 1150 square feet.
1150, uh-huh. And I'm sorry, individual cost per square foot?
Yeah, so we sell houses at fair market value, working with the families to make sure we stay within that affordability range, so that they stay under 30% housing to income cost, under 40% total debt to income. But our fair market value on our houses, they typically appraise between 115 and 125, depending on location, depending on size. 115, 115,000.
I mean, I was interested when you said we don't give them away. Well, at 115, 130, that's certainly not giving them away.
No, like I said, we work the families to make sure that payment, which is really the key, making sure that that monthly mortgage payment, including escrow, falls in an affordability range.
So when you use that language, you're talking about the families gonna pay 115 and 120, or that's what it's valued at and the family pays something different?
Again, it depends on what maintains that affordability range. The sales price is appraisal value.
Give me a dollar for it.
I can't, because it varies from family to family. It varies from house to house. It maintains an affordability.
Average.
Average. I see, you're putting me on the spot because if I start saying numbers, then people start asking, well, why is my mortgage not that?
When you come to us, you need to understand we're gonna ask questions, so if you're not, that's all right.
An average is about 550 for a three-bedroom house, significantly less than they'd be paying in rent or on a typical mortgage.
That's a fair answer and I just want to know what the range is.
Right. No, I understand. But just like I said, just to be clear there, the reason why I hesitate is to get a number like that is because if somebody watching this then comes and says, well, my mortgage isn't that, what's up, then it creates some explain.
You mean one of the folks who already have one of the houses?
Or one of the folks that's in the future, yes, sir. But a safe average is about 550. It's a legal plan, I'm sorry.
I think the thing I learned today was I was not aware that you actually marketed those and sell the homes. I thought that they were built and actually were donated to the families.
No, sir.
So I mean, that's big news. And I think you need to make sure that the public's aware of that.
Yeah, they apply. There's an application process they go through. The application process itself takes four to six months. And then the process of the sweat equity, once families are approved based on income and ability to pay their housing need. Then the process to build the house takes from 12 to 18 months for us to do four to five houses.
Congratulations. Great program.
Yeah. It's very attractive, ours, by the way. The ones that are built around Mount Olive, you know, you look at vacant lots sitting there for years and all of a sudden, there's a house being put on it. So it's very worthwhile.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate y'all's support in that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Okay, now we're at public comments time. Anyone in the audience that'd like to speak for us this morning? Okay. Just give you name, address, and phone number, please.
I'm Rachel Radford.
Can you come in?
My name is Rachel Radford and I reside at 1,005 Harris Street in Goldsboro, North Carolina, 27530. Is there anything else you want to?
Boom.
919-648-7347.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to start talking?
Yes.
I'm here today in regards to Edgewood Community Developmental Center. I'm a parent advocate in the community. I volunteer my time to help special needs families in any way they need it. They're looking for services, they need help in IEP meetings. They call me and I'm there for them. I started my journey four years ago when my son Sidney was bullied in a Wayne County public classroom, to the point where bruises were on his back and the teacher never told me. I found out by the bruises. The school didn't care. They told me bullying didn't happen until third grade when he was in kindergarten. The EC director at the time, that is not the current EC director, she wouldn't help me. And our current superintendent wouldn't help me either. In fact, I called him for two weeks, night and day, my husband and I both, and we just couldn't get in contact with him until I filed a state complaint with the Department of Instruction. Then he wanted to talk to me. So that experience taught me so much and it's made me the advocate I am in the community. I'm the former, I formerly ran the North Carolina Autism Society Wayne County chapter last year. And I've been a part of the LICC, the Local Interagency Coordinating Council, for birth to five-year-olds with special needs and disabilities in our community for the past three years. I've been really, really upset with what I've been reading in the paper for the past couple of months regarding Edgewood Community Developmental Center and our Board of Commissioners and our Board of Education. I sent all of you an email yesterday that went out to you all, as well as the Board of Education, to just kind of share my plight for families. My nephew Edgewood, I mean, my nephew Jordan goes to Edgewood. He is nonverbal, he is autistic, he is not potty trained, and he'll be 13 in August. There is no school in this county that can accommodate his needs. There are 175 children at Edgewood Community Developmental Center. Half of those are military, half of those are autistic, and the autistic children there cannot deal with change. You're talking about severe regression for your autistic children if you took them out of that school and shut it down. I've been told by Wayne County Public Schools that it's this board's fault. I've been told by people in the community that it's just constant fighting. When you read it in the paper, I just see fighting. And I don't want to see fighting. I want to see what's done right for our education. And right now, our EC department is just not getting enough money. We have children that are not getting the services they need, not getting the IEPs they need, and children that are just routinely bullied in the public school system that it just shouldn't happen. I don't know what I can do anymore as an advocate, other than speak before you and speak in front of the Board of Education. I spoke in front of them on April 15th and on May 20th. I still haven't gotten answers. These families were supposed to find out on the last day of school whether their school would stay open, whether it would be split up, or whether it would be completely shut down and every child having to go back to their homeschool. When I tell you if you shut down Edgewood, it would just be astronomical in costs because all of these children have IEPs, which are legal documents. They have services on all these IEPs. And if they're not carried out, the law is broken. You have occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists, behavioral therapy, and I could just go on in the list of services. And every child at that school has a nurse. You split up that school, you're splitting up a lot of money. And already, our county is having to contract services because we can't hire people to stay. They come in our county and they leave because other counties pay more for the positions. My husband formerly worked for the county at the health department. He's well aware of what goes on. And I'm well aware of what goes on. I need to understand how our superintendent gets paid $176,000 a year to not listen to families like myself and the Edgewood families. I need to understand how he's gotten a $36,000 raise since 2015, but our county employees are making the bare minimum. I was a wife of a county employee. I know it's the bare minimum. My husband and I struggled to put food on the table. We struggled for everything we did. We have two autistic sons that I love more than anything in this world, and I fright every little bit of me to help them, protect them, and for us to be seen. Special needs families are not seen in Wayne County. We are not supported. And there's nothing in our county to show for it. Our city doesn't see us. Our county commissioners don't see us. And our Board of Education does not see us. There are several thousand kids with IEPs in the county. There are several thousand adults with autism, with mental health, with disabilities. I'm a bipolar woman married to an autistic man. We're here and we need to be seen. There's no special needs park in Wayne County. The only special needs playground is at Edgewood Community Developmental School. And that's fenced in and nobody can get to it. But every county around us has a special needs playground. I have to drive a half an hour to go to Smithfield if I want to go to a special needs playground, an hour to go to Greenville, an hour to go to Raleigh. But it should be right here. And I want to tell you, I bugged Parks and Recreation last year. I spent two hours with the assistant director and nothing changed and nothing happened. I feel like our families don't exist here. There's no voice for EC kids on this board. There's no voice for EC kids on the Board of Education. And there's no voice for EC kids on the city council. The little bit that we're doing for special needs is the bare minimum in our county, and we need to do more. We need to be seen. We need to be loved and we need to be embraced. And we do not need to be embarrassed. So many families don't come out of their homes because they're embarrassed and they shouldn't be. Everybody should be loved and welcomed. And one other comment I wanted to make that has nothing to do with Edgewood. In April of this year, I had a sheriff come to my house. He said I missed my court date and that I needed to come with him. I told him that I had gone to the DA's office. I was told that it was dismissed and I didn't need to do anything else. He had me, he followed behind me in my car to the magistrate's office. The magistrate understood what I said, but he said, I still gotta book you. You still have to get your picture taken. So I had to get felt up by a guard from the top of my head to my toes. I had to go down in the jail, get my picture taken. And as soon as I was released, I went to the DA's office and I said, what happened? I was told my case was dismissed. I talked to you all in person and I talked to you over the phone. The lady looked right at me and said, I'll deal with this. I was put into a courtroom with Judge Stackhouse. A DA member came from the back and said, come here. And she said, we're so sorry, Ms. Radford. We're so sorry for the mistake we made. This is done with. Have a nice day. And then I had to find out in the community that this happens to other people. People could lose their jobs over this. And I don't understand why it happened to me. But when I was a child, I was sexually abused. So getting felt up from my head to my toe, that I couldn't stop. And I did nothing wrong. My case was dismissed for no reason. And I don't know what I can do as a mother to make sure this doesn't happen to other mothers, to other families. Because that morning, when I had to go to the magistrate's office, I was supposed to be at my son's preschool party. And I had to tell him why I wasn't there in just absolute tears. I know my time is up. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we're gonna recess the Board of Commissioner meeting and convene our Board of Adjustment meeting. And we're opening the 9:30 public hearing now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Barry, you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you.
Good morning. The case today is a solar utility facility called Overman Solar. This, of course, is a special use for you as the Board of Adjustment. Currently, or as proposed, it is on 67 acres. It is located on Herring Road, just south of its intersection with NC Highway 13. The applicant is Solterra Partners. I do want to mention the owners are Raymond Dale Overman, Stacy Lee Overman, David Harold Overman, and Lorraine B. Overman. Now, just to clarify, the Overmans do live on Overman Road, but this site is actual property owned on Herring Road. So just to clarify that as well. This is in the airspace control area for Seymour Johnson. And of course, that's why this is coming before you as a special use. The special use does require that you consider evidence that this use meets the findings of facts. And for the record, I do want to read over those briefly, if you'll bear with me. The findings of facts are that the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations, meaning our solar ordinance. The proposed use will not adversely affect the health and safety of the county residents and will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. The proposed use will not be affected adversely by existing uses and will be placed on a lot of sufficient size to meet the space requirements of said use. The proposed use will not constitute a nuisance or hazard because of the number of persons who will use such a facility, the vehicular movement, or the noise or fume generation. And the proposed use shall be subject to the minimum dimensional requirements of the district in which it is to be located and shall conform to the off-street parking and lighting regulations. So with that said, I do want to mention as well that the applicant has filed a property impact study on this. We do have that on record in our file. And also, Seymour Johnson Air Force Base has reviewed the request and has stated that there will be no impact to their operations. It is currently surrounded by natural vegetation. If you look at the screen or either in your packet, you can see to the east and west and actually also to the south, there's natural vegetation. There are some areas directly on the north side, a small area that's open. And on the southwest side, where the applicant's proposing to put in some vegetative buffer there, where there is some openings there. The applicant, or actually the property owner, does own quite a bit of this property surrounding as well, except for the piece that's just off the screen to the very north that is open, where they're putting in that vegetative buffer there. And if you look at the screen, the area to the right, that cleared area, that's the actual county landfill there. We did send out notices in the mail to adjacent property owners and we also posted the sign at the property. It actually advertised twice in the newspaper as well, as required for the public hearing. And with that, the planning board did recommend approval of the site plan for this case. And I'd be glad to answer any questions. The applicant is present. The applicant is present.
Anyone like to speak? Okay. Does the board consider taking action today?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Barry, I just wanna get a clarification.
My understanding is that solar facilities do not fall under our soil and water restrictions. I've had a lot of complaints from, in my district, about some of the solar farms, the water not being channeled to the right location, possibly flooding other properties that were not flooded in the past. Are there any restrictions at all on the construction of a solar facility in reference to stormwater?
Right, for, for stormwater, there is not typically, because they're only impacting just the spots where those posts are going in, and they're not creating actual impervious surface on the ground itself. Typically, they're not, but now that they are disturbing over an acre of land if they do that, they do have to do soil erosion and sedimentation control through the state. So there is the potential that that might have to be done, but stormwater itself typically not.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I move approval.
Thank you. Any discussion on Mr. Daughery's motion? If not, I want the favor please to see if I raise your right hand.
Yes.
Mr. Peck, yes. Thank you, Barry. All right, we adjourned the Board of Adjustment meeting and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting. Unfinished business, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In front of you, under unfinished business, number one is question to adopt Resolution two thousand nineteen nineteen, resolution to approve the grant agreement for the Crawford property reimbursement for the Wayne Executive Jet Board. And this is property the county has purchased in the past that we have been working with the NC EFT to try to get reimbursement for for many years, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution two nineteen nineteen, a resolution to approve the grant agreement for the Crawford property reimbursement for the Wayne County Executive Jet Board.
Okay. Motion's made, any discussion? There'll be no discussion, all in favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Yes.
Mr. Peck, yes. Now, our consent agenda, as we had our briefing this morning, I need most to approve consent agenda.
I move.
Motion's moved, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please see if I raise your right hand.
Yes.
Mr. Peck, yes. That will catch a glimpse.
You hope.
Intention, anyway.
This is Catch a Glimpse for June two thousand nineteen, produced by Wayne County Public Affairs. We sat down with Leslie Parker, an air traffic controller at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, to learn more about his job in our From the Flightline segment. The Wayne County Public Library staff stopped by to discuss summer learning and everything that the library is doing this summer for kids while they're out of school. We also remembered the life of Peggy M. Seagres recently, and covered the base community council meeting. We remembered our fall in law enforcement during a recent memorial service, and we honored those that have fought for our freedom for Memorial Day. We gave thanks to our moms for Mother's Day, and also covered the Board of Health's Charles T. Gibson Scholarship Ceremony. We broke ground on the all-new Wayne County nine-one-one and Emergency Operations Center, and can't wait to cover the rest of the progress of that building. This has been Catch a Glimpse.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Honeycutt, comments?
Just a couple of things. Number one, I wanna thank the staff and the board for the work that was done on our budget, and I appreciate the thought and, and the decisions that have been made, and appreciate what you do, and again, thanks to staff as well. The other thing I did wanna remind you, we have already canceled our July second Board of Commissioners meeting, so that there will not be a July second meeting. Our next meeting will be July, I believe, sixteen. And that's all I have today.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Mayo.
Just, just one comment. I wanna go back to the four H robotics. That's one, that's one of the many, many organizations that are available to youth in Wayne County. You hear me harp on the four Hs because that's the one I'm familiar with, but we have others in the county. I encourage, I encourage commissioners to attach to one of these for our young people because, as I think Commissioner Akoc said, this, this is the leaders of our county and the future, possibly elected officials. And last of all, I'd like to say, boy, am I glad the budget's over. Thank, thank, thank you, Mr. Manager, and all your staff, everyone that came together. I think this is my eighth one, I think if I count correct, but I will say that in closing that this, this was the closest, the, you guys did a fantastic job in pulling down the first time what you thought was satisfactory, and you did a great job with that. A lot of times you see more fluff in a budget if you go to look at it a second time. You didn't do that. You made sure that everything was gonna be good for us, pay, benefits, services to our citizens, none of that was gonna be affected. So I do appreciate you and your staff and what you did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner, good morning.
No comment at this time.
Commissioner Daughery.
I agree with you. This is uncalled for, that the parents and students at Edgewood have not gotten an answer in regards to the future of that school. To make sure that you understand, our board here has actually added back additional funding for Edgewood that was to be used to actually pay for the so-called mortgage on the middle lane school. We have added that back, and I think that came to five hundred and eighty-some-odd thousand dollars. The problem is that there is some other funding that has been cut, but the school board and administration is simply going to have to acknowledge whether or not they are going to continue with that program, but they need to let you know something because you're gonna have to make arrangements. Those, those parents deserve to know so they can have time to make arrangements because the school's gonna be back open here, I'm sorry, school year will begin again in August, and so that's only a few months away. I do feel your pain. This board is very concerned about it. This board is looking to the school system to make some decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell.
I'll have a committee report, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to thank the county manager and his staff for working on the budget. We put you in a bad position there and had you going back and looking at things, and we appreciate that we are not making a tax increase and have a balanced budget. Thank you.
Mr. Akoc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, it was on the, just on the video, I wanna thank everyone for their participation in the groundbreaking for the nine-one-one center. As Mr. Honeycutt said that day, that's kind of a passion of mine, and we're looking forward for, to getting that facility up and running, and I've said many, many times, that's the heartbeat of Wayne County. We all rely on it to get help to us when we need it, regardless of what kind of help it is. And also, touch on what Mr. Daughery just said about the Edgewood school, I just want everyone to keep in mind now, the Board of Education is an elected board just like we are. This board cannot tell the Board of Education what they can and can't do. We can sit down and have conversation and, and work together, and I think we've done that in the past. It is our responsibility to, to fund the facilities for the school, but I just want everyone to know, you know, they're elected just like we are. And that's probably enough said. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Peck.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
What I got to say, but, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I wanna thank staff and my fellow Board Commissioners for helping me out through this time. People probably wondering if I left the county, go somewhere else, now I'm sitting there in Salisbury. Just trying to give them a quick update. I had back surgery on the, May fifteenth, we ran into some problems, and I'm recovering from that surgery, and unfortunately, as soon as I'm recovered from that, I've got to go back and more. But again, I just appreciate everybody allowing me to be part of this process, but I will be back, I promise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Okay, going back to closed session for the purpose of.
Same thing.
Same thing. Motion to go, closed session.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me make a request before we go into closed session. It's a hell of a Michelle Strata to come over and give us a briefing on healthy eating and living. She's, she's good at it, so I think the general public need to hear that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just don't load it all up at one time.
Okay.
Make it hers closer to lunch.
Get her to the kitchen first.
Cater in.
You asked her to come today?
No, not today.
Not today?
Just one, one of our meetings.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but going back to what you were bringing up about Edgewood, the last, the last meeting that I attended at Board of Education, did I not understand that they came up and said that there would be a decision made in June? Did all of y'all hear that? I did. That an Edgewood decision would not be made until June? Well, you know, we're in the middle of June, so, but I was sitting at a board meeting, Board of Education meeting, when that comment was made. I almost believed that it came out in the paper, Steve, in one of your articles, that they said June is the month, so let's just see what happens. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I retain the motion, go to closed session.
So I'm gonna get.
All in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Mr. Park, do you have something for us?
Yes, sir. We would, I would ask you to call a public hearing on July sixteen at nine fifteen to consider a, an ordinance that would set up emergency services, franchising of ambulances.
Have a motion.
So I'm.
Got a motion on the floor, anybody have any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, please see if I raise your right hand. Thank you. Anything else?
Not for me.
Meeting adjourned.